Okay, it's 7:08 PM and I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Monday, August 30th to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Back to the allegiance to the Father of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, first Selectmen's report. First, I want to say congratulations and thank you to Rich Jacobson, who is retiring from his role as our Environmental Protection Officer after 15 years of dedicated service to the town. We wish Rich a very relaxing and enjoyable retirement. I believe his last day is tomorrow, correct Kate?
Yes.
It is with great sadness that I have to report the passing of longtime town volunteer Mike Hights on August 26th. Mike was an active volunteer for the Darien Little League, Darien Arts Center, Darien Nature Center, Darien Men's Association, the RTM, and volunteered with the Advisory Commission on Coastal Waters to do water sampling on the Long Island Sound, which is what he was doing right before he passed. A memorial service for Mike will be held tomorrow, August 31st at 3:30 at St. Luke's Episcopal Church here in Darien. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen and the entire town, we extend our most sincere condolences to Mike's wife Nancy, sons Matthew and Nick, and daughter Caitlin, and their families and all of Mike's many friends. Mike and several of his DMA colleagues were a great help to me with our local businesses early in COVID, for which I am deeply grateful and he will be missed. On Wednesday, September 1st, Eversource is going to be presenting a public information meeting virtually from 6 o'clock to 7:30 to discuss their transmission line vegetation management project and its impacts to Darien. Attendance information is up on the homepage of the town's website under News. 9/11 ceremonies. As you know, this is the 20th year of remembrance of that horrific terrorist attack on the United States on September 11th, 2001. The Monuments and Ceremonies Commission will host our annual remembrance ceremony on Saturday, September 11th, beginning at 8:20 AM at our 9/11 memorial behind Middlesex Middle School. This year's State of Connecticut ceremony will be held at 5:30 PM on Thursday, September 9th at Sherwood Island State Park in Westport. Family members of those who were killed in the attacks will participate, and the names of the 161 victims with ties to Connecticut will be read aloud. As you know, I mentioned a number of meetings ago that our sister city in Darien, Illinois, got to say it the way they do, is holding a 20th remembrance ceremony on September 10th, at which they will be honoring the members of the Darien, Connecticut community that were killed in 9/11. And that's just such a touching, a touching event. So I had hoped that, that I would be able to go to that. I'm, I'm still on the fence about it. Travel is difficult because you can't be assured to get back, and I need to be here, you know, as you all will want to be here for the 9/11 ceremony in Darien. But they are going to be videotaping the ceremony, so we will make sure that we get a, a copy of that to view in the future. And lastly, COVID-19 update. 65 cases since the last week of July. 29 of those 65 cases were breakthrough cases. 14 of the 65 cases were in children not yet eligible for vaccine. Townwide, 88.4% of residents who are vaccine eligible have been fully vaccinated. That's extraordinary. And 96% have been partially vaccinated. Booster shots are now available for people who are immunocompromised. On or about September 20th, the general public will be eligible for boosters if you had received the Pfizer or Moderna vaccine series. You will need to have at least eight months since your final dose in your series. The CDC is considering reducing the time to six months from that last dose, but that new information has not been codified yet. The Darien Health Department is beginning to make plans to host booster clinics. I have no information about what folks like me who got the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine will do, hoping they have a booster sometime soon as well. That's it for me, Kate.
Just a couple things. The railing for the stairs should be in soon. We've been waiting patiently. We are, despite the uptick in COVID, we are seeing things starting to come back to town fall. The Arts Center will be having classes in the Math Center again this fall. So we are seeing things getting busy. And we are actually starting to prep for the budget already internally. We're trying to get the capital budget. We want to have that prepared sooner than we have in the past so that it comes to you as a more full document, well, to those of you who left, as a more full document in January, the whole six-year plan. So we're already starting to work on that.
Thank you, Kate. Any reports, Board Liaison reports? Kip?
Sure. Well, it started school. I better have a report. The Ox Ridge is open for business. We got a parking lot in last minute. We got it striped, kind of the bus slip in and all of that. We had a tour on Tuesday. I think Jamie was there, Dr. Adler was there, Dr. Forshaw was there, and members of the committee along with the people from ONG and AP. The parking lot, doing the asphalt last week was a miracle because there was so much work done. That whole area was all torn up. We had to put the sewer line down as far as 20 feet below grade, to give you an idea of how far down some of the, the connections had to be. We had to totally reroute the electrical lines because Eversource wouldn't turn off the main power to the school because it was a direct burial, not a conduit. So all of these problems have been solved, thank goodness, before school started, and we have a surface down and we have, I think it looked pretty good. What do you think?
No, it's gonna be amazing.
Then we had a tour of the, the building, which I think they're making very good progress on. It's, we have one possible holdup which we're trying to resolve right now, which has to do with the roofing material. It's a question of the chemical that's being used to make the roof, which is in short supply. You know, it's, it's one of these polycapables that you have to have to, to cure the roof, and we're working on that right now. So far through the end of July, we spent on the project $13.7 million, of which 11.5 was construction costs. And of course, we just approved, you just signed here another $1.6 million for the work done recently. So all, all in all, I would, I would say we're making great progress, given, given the circumstances we've got to deal with. I hope that we're going to still be on time for the academic wing in April. We may be a little bit delayed on that, but that's not a big deal. But I'm pretty sure that we're going to have the whole project done by the time we want it to have it done in the spring of 2023. That's where we are.
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
It will soon be there.
David, anything from Blake?
No, next week.
Okay, perfect. Okay, public comments. Jenny, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Jenny Schwartz, District 1, Eight Saddle Ridge Road. I have a comment on your agenda tonight as the discussion of Highland Farm and your proposed policy. I read it. I'm very impressed. I want to thank all of you who really put a lot of thought and, and time and consideration into it. I think it sets the right tone, and I think it's, it's, you know, when you look at what the landscaping plan that you all have planned for there, it's really a nice vision. I just have a couple comments. Hate to bring up the port-a-potty again, but as the landscaping plan gets implemented, perhaps there's a little thought to a place where that can be screened, or those can be screened for when you have events and whatnot, and, you know, whatever program you have. And, you know, secondly, cannot impress upon you enough the need to coordinate with the Hunt Club and the riding and horse activities there as Pam and the town, Pam Gary, will need to, you know, coordinate with programming because those, the activities over there, you just want to make sure that the timing. And I know it says no whistles and whatnot, but the, you just, I would love to help, you know, see the town minimize any liability there with horses spooking and whatnot. But congratulations, and I really appreciate the work you all did. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. Okay, any other public comments received, Kate? We did receive the, the email from the Darien Soccer Association.
That was it.
Okay, new business. We are not adjourning to executive session for Wayne this evening. He'll come back another evening for us. So we, items number one and two will be deferred. So discuss and take action to recommend the purchase of 27 Crimmans Road. We have discussed this in a previous meeting.
Right. You approved the request to appropriate the grant, but Wayne preferred that you have a motion as well to actually ask the RTM to authorize the, to approve the acquisition of land because the acquisition would have to build that. So he wanted a separate resolution on that. He said simple motion, which I provided you suggested motion. Simple motion is sufficient.
Yes.
Kate, so I understand that on FEMA, if we go over budget when we do the demo, FEMA doesn't participate in that.
Correct.
So what happens? I understand that, but that the, the court was actually came in about 5,000 less for the demo.
That's what Marcus said, that he, the quotes he was getting on the demo were less than what he invited.
So does that go strictly against our side, or is that split?
So I would say, you know, FEMA gets the best of it, right? We, there's a maximum that we'll get, they'll pay 75% of that maximum that was the 670... 669 is the 100%, right? So that's, we'll get, the max we'll get is 75% of that.
Right.
If we spend less, we get 75% of what we spend.
Okay. That's, okay. Good on them. All right, thanks.
Does anybody have any other questions? Okay, then I'll read the motion. The Board of Selectmen hereby approves the purchase of 27 Crimmans Road through the FEMA Hazard Mitigation Grant Program and local matching funds, and further recommends approval of the acquisition to the representative town meeting for their approval. entertain a motion to approve that. Sarah moves, seconded by Monica. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Great. Okay, discuss and take action on proposed policy for programming at Highland Farm.
Are we changing that to discuss?
I think we're going to change it to discuss at the recommendation of the Darien Youth Soccer Association, who wishes to leave room to work with them, to address any potential issues that stand in, in, in our way to allow them to, to use the property. I think everybody has reviewed both of the planning and zoning actions, the, the approval in 2018 and then the 2019 amended approval. They were all in your packet, I think, from last time. So I want to thank Kate for coming up with this list of potential policies, new policies. And just as a refresher for the public, what was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission represents the maximum allowed property usage. And the Board of Selectmen as the body who has the responsibility to, to manage or to delegate our management of, which we've done to the Parks and Rec Department, we have the ability to put on additional rules and policies for the use of that property. And I'd just like to give a brief synopsis of what I know from the very beginning of the potential acquisition of this property was we wanted to keep it aesthetically looking essentially the same tomorrow as it did before we owned it. We wanted it to be predominantly used for passive recreational activities, but there was room to allow for some programmed activities and some athletics. It was never intended, and I think there were a lot of people very vocal, including myself, that it was never intended to become an athletics facility. You might recall that when the first renderings came out of Highland Farm, they had rendered in like three or four soccer fields, and that was, that was a non-starter for, for those of us on the board. It was a non-starter for the neighbors, and I think we got to a good place where there's room to allow some athletics activities, but with the overlay that those activities have to be limited and, and first and foremost sensitive to the safety issues at the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club. I think we've done a good job. Jenny, I hope you've seen the increased plantings that have occurred there. We have instructed the Parks and Rec Department to let the grass grow in a buffer as a disincentive for young children and, and the dogs that happen to find themselves off-leash going up to the fence. Dogs need to be on leash. So we're, we're making very best efforts. We've actually had our town attorney and our insurance agent out there met on site with the town and the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club to come to a consensus about the, the, the mutual obligations, the obligations that we have, as well as the obligations that the riding club has to protect the safety of their, their riders. So our job is to see if we want to impose any additional restrictions as a, a way to give specific guidance to the Parks and Rec Department as they are out managing and programming the property. I see a bit of a difference between programmed activity that falls in the bucket of Parks and Rec sponsored activities and programs, and then facilities use agreements that get approved through Parks and Rec for outside organizations like Darien Youth Soccer, Darien Football, special events for nonprofits. So kind of with that backdrop, I'm, I'm eager to hear Board thoughts about, we, we know that these are, these are very conservative proposals here, but these are a starting point for, for discussion, and would love to hear your thoughts on if you want to impose any further restrictions on the use of Highland Farm.
So Jamie, what, were you saying that you are in favor of the Park and Rec, that, that committee to put, to allow activities, but not outside groups? Is that what I'm hearing?
Nope. I just said that there, there's a difference. And remember, there's also a difference between the, the Parks and Rec Department as the manager, the property manager, and using it to put parks programs on like yoga, tai chi, even Little Tot Soccer is a, a Parks and Rec program. Very different than, you know, Darien Youth Soccer, who says we'd like to rent the fields for a season, for these days and these hours, for practices and games.
Let me, let me see if I can phrase it slightly different.
Yep.
What I, what I heard, what I heard her say was the programs that are put on under the office of the Park and Rec Department effectively are effectively town-sponsored programs because they're put on by a department of the town. Darien Youth Soccer, the town supports the, the association, but it is a separate legal entity and association. And that's the distinction I heard in here.
Correct. And we can go one of two ways. We can decide as a board to allow the Parks and Rec Department to manage all programming and approve all facilities use agreements. Or the Board of Selectmen can take an active role in approving, or at least, you know, casting an opinion about the use by those outside organizations.
And we have currently the Parks and Rec Committee are the ones that are, department of, are the ones that are managing the property as far as taking care of the caretaking. Is that correct?
Correct.
Can I have a fair understanding of what we have done with Darien Youth Soccer? It's been practices, correct? And it's only been in the spring, and it's only for kind of a few weeks here and there. Is that in the training?
But it's under schedule.
It's under schedule.
Yep.
Yeah, it's, they've had games.
Right. Have you ever had any games?
77 practices, drill sessions for kids who are eight and nine years old.
They, 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 they only established one field on the playing area, and they set it up as far away from the Hunt Club as they were able to and still get it onto the ruined section of the field.
And my understanding is there were some days that they didn't use it until the weather or whatever else. Was that correct? We know that.
Correct.
Yeah, it was gonna be that all the time.
They have 35 practices, 10 Saturday games, and 15 Sunday games.
Were those, without incident, were those handled well? Could, could we do something where, you know, they're able to maintain, we have those kinds of activities? I, I love the idea of understanding the schedule from the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club so that there is a better understanding of when there would be the least amount of interaction, which would be optimal for the program. And I do understand the difference between the town programming and having another organization. Having said that, I don't know that we're ready to turn that field, that area into a very highly programmed, whether it's town programming or other outside organizations. The difficulty is that we're not typically, the Board does not practice field management. We don't typically manage those kind of activities management, but there's a preference obviously for having Parks and Rec managed, but I do understand the, the distinction of this is under the Board of Selectmen.
I think if I could, Jamie, I think Sarah, one of the issues that you have to deal with is what level of intensity of use do you want as a Board of Selectmen on the property? And, you know, one of the things that I tried to think of in coming up with this list was making sure that if you had a game, there were soccer practices going on in, on that part of the field, that there was still room for other people to come and park and use the walking trail, you know, without being inhibited. So, you know, some of that might mean making sure that there's enough time between practices or clinics that the lots can clear.
And I think that's the preference, to keep it not to be one of our heavily used fields. I can understand and appreciate, absolutely.
To answer your first question, I did not receive any complaints about the spring utilization of that one grass field. That's the only thing we're talking about. That's the only, it's the flattened area. Jenny, there's probably a name that was...
It was the old riding rink.
The old riding rink.
Yeah, called it the landing strip.
So that was the only place that Darien Youth Soccer played their games. I did not receive any complaints about their use. The complaints that we received were about the port-a-john.
I do think that the landscaping has provided some very visual barriers, especially with the fence with the Ox Ridge Riding and Racket Club. I think that's a, a positive. I think it's, you know, as the plantings grow, and I think that it'll be much more unobtrusive to have some of those activities. It is difficult to kind of put some of these... I think one of the ones I have an issue with is number four. Sessions are limited to two weeks in duration. I don't know that that's necessarily what we're doing now for some of our own programming.
Correct. That would be correct.
That might be a very difficult one to, to follow.
Oh, a little further. I think it's overreaching. I think it's overreaching. I mean, I really, I really, from a philosophical point of view, I would hate to have the Board of Selectmen have to figure out what activity is correct. I would most prefer the Board of Selectmen be a body that can review and say, no, that, that didn't work out. We don't want you to do that. Or we advise you not bringing that one up, rather than to say you're working out every possible picee or, I don't know, what was the thing that...
Yes, ninja.
No, we would, yeah. Just to be clear, Kip, if the Parks and Rec Department has a program that they want to run on Highland Farm, they can run it without, without oversight or input from the Board of Selectmen.
I thought we were gonna try and limit these limitations on some of those things.
Remember, these, these are simply talking points.
I understand.
And they were, I deliberately made them very restrictive.
Yeah.
So that...
We can say no.
Yep.
You can say no, you can listen up, you know. But if I gave you guidelines that were very permissive, it's, I think it's harder to narrow it down, so.
Yep. I agree with you, Sarah. I think limiting the sessions to two weeks in duration is, is very limiting.
It's difficult.
Yep, yep. And then, you know, in, in number four, to talk about, do we want to limit it to clinics and lessons, or are we okay with games and scrimmages? I, I'm, I'm indifferent about that too, because they're, in my mind, they're the same, really. There's, there's very little difference between a clinic and scrimmage.
My games. I would, I would like us to consider trying to work with Darien Youth Soccer to see if we can find a solution that will work for them, but still works for the safety of the Hunt Club and riders at the, at the club, right?
Yep.
This past year's experience was good, acceptable, you choose the adjective, right? That seemed to work out okay. We need to be mindful of the noises that could screw the horses, right? We have to settle the issue with the goals, right? They left the goals up this year. And here, we talked about not doing that, so we have to come to some resolution. But the other uses there, I think, are pretty good. Getting into things like, you know, the one that's listed here about ball play should not interfere with the walking path, that may be difficult to interpret and enforce. For instance, if they put the playing field at the far end, as far away from Ox Ridge as possible, it's only 10 feet, 10 yards, excuse me, from the parking area to the playing field.
So I talked to Mike today, and he said that it's, it's only in rare circumstances when a ball would go from, from the field to the walking path. There's no normal interaction.
So probably, yeah.
And then that could be really more of a, you know, an agreement that I agree with you. I think we should hear from the Darien Youth Soccer.
Let, let's have them propose to us how they can make it work for them, and then we can determine whether or not that's acceptable.
Kate?
Yeah, I'm just, I fear you're, I have nothing against Darien Youth Soccer, but I fear you're giving them a little bit too much power in this, and what happens with another organization that would like to use the property? And then you said, well, you know, you've accommodated what Darien Youth Soccer wants, well, why not what Darien Youth Football wants? So I, I'm not sure what...
I see a big difference between balls on the ground and balls in the air. But I, I hear your point, and, and we are, would be setting a precedent.
Yeah, and that's, if that's what you're gonna do, is say nothing in the air, the soccer ball can go in the air. Yeah, that's my, that was my thinking, Kate, is what happens when another group comes before us and asks us, you know, to consider them? I don't know.
Well, wouldn't they be subject to the same way that we would be, you know, talking about treating the youth soccer? They would have to come before us, tell us what their anticipated proposed uses would be. We'd get to talk to them about potential risks or concerns. be, we'd get to talk to them about potential risks or concerns, you know, related to how they plan to use it and come to a reasonable facilitation of when we would be willing to let it happen.
Yes.
So, just because you have allowed one group to use the facility doesn't mean you are required to let the other group use the facility. They have to use it subject to certain use rules and safety precautions that Board of Selectmen requires.
I think my concern is with designing your policy around a specific organization and their needs.
The best way.
I would design it so that, you know, if you wanted to fit their needs or allow their needs, but that it could fit others too.
Right, I agree. The, the best, the best limiter is time, right? And, and, you know, what we, what I wouldn't want to see, and again, I've got, you know, about two minutes left here in this seat, but what I wouldn't want to see is an aggregation of athletics activities where, you know, we've given one organization a schedule for the spring and then another organization comes and wants due consideration. I would, I would wanna limit all athletic activity, whatever sport that would be, to certain parameters that are the real limiting factor. And then, you know, if there's.
I guess it's where you start. Do you start with, with the time in mind or do you start with, you know, the park and rec gets priority and that's, that's the line? I don't know, I don't have the answer, but I do know that these, these things, it's really good to have them hammered out really, really thoroughly so that people understand going forward.
Correct.
So.
And Pam and her staff, they need guidance.
Yeah. Yeah, to be fair to them, they need to have something that they can refer to and say, what needs to be parameters within which we can work.
Kate, you say in number six that the activity with balls must be two hundred feet from the property line. How far is that already?
The, um, the landing strip? The edge of the landing strip is, is about two hundred yards.
Two hundred yards?
Yards.
Feet, I'm sorry, feet. It's two hundred feet.
Is it two hundred feet or is it two hundred yards?
No, it's two hundred feet.
That was the objective.
That was the whole, that was the whole thing. We looked at that and Pam, Pam measured it and.
I paced it off this afternoon, seventy-three yards to, to the fence.
There you go.
Which include, which included the incremental seven feet of knee-deep grass.
Yeah, there you go.
Is it already up, the grass along the fence?
We've told them a while back to start with.
No, I know, because the idea was to have it all grow up and be a natural buffer as well.
Yeah, it's about, it, it was knee-deep for me once I got off the boat.
The, the idea was to come up with a measurement that took you to the edge of that ring.
And having the trees there is a great.
And how far does a whistle sound really go? I, I think, you know.
It's my understanding though that, at least from what Darian Youth Soccer was saying, that they don't use those whistles, they use some electronic.
Use an electronic device and I haven't heard it.
I've never heard it either.
I'd like to hear it, I'd like to.
It might be lower decibel than.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, my, my point there is the person who really knows what's important for the horses is the head of the, the head trainer.
Yep.
And he's really experienced, you know him, don't you?
Since he was his big.
Yeah, we can reach out to him.
You're from California?
Yeah.
Oh, you did, okay. He's very.
We're, we're at the same bar.
We, obviously, they're not playing this fall. You know, they haven't asked to play this fall, which is great. But we can certainly ask Chance what his experience was in the spring. I can tell you that we heard from the riding club on a number of other matters and I believe we would have heard from the hunt club had it been an issue, so.
I would hope so.
But I do wanna, you know, reach out to him and just get some feedback.
Yeah, maybe we could ask him to give us feedback about whistles and maybe, you know, get the electronic noise thing to, to him to listen to as well. It may, may not just be, you know, it could be also a frequency thing, right? Like a dog would, you know, there are certain frequencies that a dog will hear that humans can't hear, right? So maybe a horse can hear certain frequencies that we don't hear, so.
And it's six oh one, half a dozen the other, right? If you don't have a whistle or this electronic device, then there will be people yelling.
Right.
That's the only alternative, so.
Can you make a comment?
Yeah.
Just another factor for the hunt club is not, you know, when people are watching soccer and they're with families while the kids are playing, there's also the issue of people that want to come over and they, they approach the fence and they want to see the horses. So it's about the intensity of use and how do you manage people from peeking through the, you know, trees to stand up on the fence to watch the horses? And I think that's also, it's not just the whistles, it's about the traffic and the allure. Of course, everyone wants to go watch these beautiful animals and it's compelling, but they're, you know, and I agree, both, you know, both the hunt club and the town can do things to manage the buffer, but it's, it's, it's hard to keep people off. The other comment I wanted to, you know, a little bit, keep me with Kate said, with regard to use on the field management, you know, I think, we, I, I don't know if there's been a field use study, I know we've talked about them, but in, in getting a handle on a massive, you know, field aerial view of how all the fields are being used at any given time will, you know, help dictate if you want Highland Farm to be sort of used, sort of the la, the field of last resort, if you will, or, or, you know, something of that nature, that I think it's, it's in the context of what's happening across the town in terms of all sports and all activities. So it's, as other outside vendors or, or even Park Struck, they want to run more programming, it's looking at what other fields are avail, available because there are, so.
That, that, that is something that I have not seen and I've heard other people.
That can help, that's gonna help the decision maybe.
Which is the, and yet across all leagues.
And I think the leagues would appreciate.
Utilization of fields, because if, if.
It's optimization.
If we had something like that, we could go back to Jamie's idea of saying, okay, we only want X percent of the available time to be dedicated to youth sports, non-park and rec programming type activities. And maybe, I don't, I don't know what that number is, pick it, and you know, whatever percentage you, you choose, and then we can determine, you know, how that works based on the other field management.
Right, you would have a really better sense of planning and optimization if you wanna, you know, if these fields are gonna, I think there's something like twenty-three athletic fields in the town when you count all the schools and whatnot. So, it's just a thought that to help Parks and Rec plan so that it can present, you know, if, if they're coming to you, like, we need to run a program in Highland Farm because they know that it's been exhausted and they've looked at everything else and this is the only thing that's available.
Kate.
I mean, along the line, those lines, you also would have to consider where does the town's responsibility to provide field space begin and end?
Correct.
And, you know, athletics are very important, but is it the town's responsibility to be able to provide as many fields as people want?
Well, that's.
Does that cost?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question, it's a little bit of a slippery slope conversation, right? Because what is the town's obligation to provide park programming, for example, right? But I love the idea of a field use study, it was talked about during the acquisition period. It would be a great joint board project, you know, so I recommend to the future Board of Selectmen that you join with the Board of Ed and the Parks and Rec Commission and fund a field use study.
It's incredibly needed.
In the next, in the next budget.
And the field management.
Um, yeah, you could probably do that too. I think that's a really good idea. On the point of Darian Youth Soccer, and the reason why they're at Highland Farm in the first place is because in the spring, they get displaced by field hockey and lacrosse. So, there's just not, there, there just doesn't seem to be enough field space for program demand. And I'm, you know, I am generally pleased to see what they did this spring. It was limited in nature, you know, they adhered to the younger kids, not, you know, no, none of the older kids who require bigger fields and more kids on the field. Is there anything else on here? So that, the, there's a couple of things that are, I know that Mike said are kind of very difficult for, again, we're talking about youth soccer, but I'll just throw them out, and I know the policy really has to be developed with athletics in mind, not youth soccer in mind.
Correct.
They, they would not be able to remove the goals on a daily basis. That would be prohibitively expensive for them to do that. And I got the sense that they, they need the playing time on a Sunday. I'm not a fan of athletics on a Sunday, I'll just throw that out there. I know a lot of people like that, but they, they found the use on Sundays to be important for them. So the idea that we would take that away might be difficult, but. I think number seven, Kate, there, that would, is this, that would end up being more restrictive than what's in the special permit?
Yes, well, I think all of this is more restrictive. My, my thought there was simply to make sure that other people had, you know, the opportunity to park there.
Yeah.
I don't think it should for something like a soccer clinic, it shouldn't be a problem. There are ninety-two spaces.
Right.
So you, you know, it should not be a problem.
Right.
To be able to restrict yourself, you know, forty-five spaces. But that was the, the thinking, was that making sure that the people who wanted to come and walk the trail or have a picnic, that they would have a place to park.
Right.
What, what Mike told me was that during their, their typical team, fully fitted with kids, when they play a game, including parents runs around fifty to sixty total, which would include kids, parents, whatever, so, you know.
So, yes.
Split it and call it twenty-five-ish cars, thirty cars maybe for an event like that, so as long as there's not more than one field, so they're not asking to run two games at a time. It doesn't seem like a, a whole lot.
No.
I'd be, I was actually interested when I saw the memo on the tot soccer, because it was mentioned that there were up to two hundred participants. I just didn't know how they scheduled that, right? Just the special use.
Back to back.
That the, yeah, but the, the, technically, the planning and zoning document requires there's supposed to be thirty minutes between.
This second, the amendment, reduce that, depending on the number of participants in the program.
Yes, it's based on the number of participants.
Oh, depending on the number of participants, okay.
But that's a, that's a question for us, do we want to extend the thirty-minute buffer between programs, you know, regardless of the participation? Looking for discussion.
And you know, maybe because they, they didn't have that much of a buffer in the spring, and I think some of their fall programs don't have a big buffer, maybe that's something that some of the people who are the neighbors who are opposite the park lots could answer for you is how intrusive is that when you have coming and going at the same time? And are there problems with that?
If there are no other comments, then I think the way we'll proceed is to, you know, suspend the discussion for tonight, we'll invite the youth soccer to give us input and then we will continue our discussion at a future meeting.
And I would also request, I mean, I don't know Chance, I think it's the name that you mentioned.
Chance or Kelly.
I, I don't know him, but if we could get some input from him, either in person or, you know, through someone that knows him.
Yeah, we can reach out to him.
That would be, that would be useful as well. Because we definitely want to make sure that everything is safe there, right?
Yep. Separate from this idea that we're talking about athletics is the approval for special events, not hosted by the Parks and Rec Commission or Department. You know, we, we approve the stuff like the Darian Road Race. You know, and we have to decide if we want to have a role in the approval process for special events. The Planning and Zoning Commission has to receive annually a list of planned special events. It wouldn't be difficult for us to take on a piece of that approval process, but something for the board to think about whether you want to be involved in that or not.
Yeah, my thought there in the policy was not as much the special events as the programmed activities where, you know, like you said earlier, that if it's park and rec tiny tots soccer program, fine, but if an outside agency wanted to rent the field for eight weeks and run some kind of clinic, that that kind of thing was what I was thinking of, coming back before you.
So those two separate items?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, if there's nothing more on this tonight, we'll move on to our next agenda item. All right, which is, old business, discuss and take action on a request for an appropriation of twenty-four thousand dollars in ARPA funds for the acquisition of the Zen City software program. And I think, Kate, you have some additional information for us about cost and, and what's included and what isn't included in that.
Right, so I went back to them after the meeting last week with your comments and the desire for higher level of surveys. And so I learned a little bit about statistically valid surveys. Sure, for a community our size, three hundred, four hundred responses is statistically significant for us, which I was surprised at, I thought it was thousands. But the, the issue between doing a full-blown survey that is statistically valid is the time that it takes because of needing to fill the various buckets, like, it's not just a matter of getting three hundred responses, you have to have your three hundred responses in the right buckets. So, that was interesting, and it would be more costly. So what they do, they actually call them temperature checks, where they put a link up on the web, they, they post it, they push it out, and we can have responses in, in, in a matter of days. So they would.
But it's not a survey.
It's not a, it's a survey, but it's not going to be a survey where you can say with confidence that this is statistically valid, that they've hit the full range of demographics in a community. So I guess the question is, is that something that you would be interested in having? Or do you really want to hire somebody to do actual statistically valid surveys? Because if that's what we want, for them it'd be more costly, there are other providers. They, after speaking to them, for the, the original quote of twenty-four thousand dollars was not going to, something was going to include any of these temperature checks, but they would include three of them for us for the same price that they quoted us originally. So I think it's a matter of what kind of, is, does that provide what we're looking for?
So I go back to one of the comments, you said you had called some of the towns and cities that they had worked with and what they found to be the most valuable piece of information that they used from that was that survey piece, is that correct?
Yeah, the survey.
But this is, this is what they, they say, yeah.
Right, but that's an additional cost.
No, that's, these temperature checks are what, you know.
Right, but the survey piece is an additional cost, it's not.
No, 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 that's, the temperature checks are what they say the others are using.
Okay.
A survey, if you were going to do, you know, the whole big survey, yes, they could do them, it's a much higher cost.
Right, okay. We used a survey several years ago when we did the parks plan, is that correct? We had a.
We did, Weston and Samson did a survey.
Right, and we had a very statistically significant response rate, we had an incredible response rate, is that correct?
I don't know what the response rate was, it was very high.
There were over three thousand respondents between electronic and.
Yeah, it was a phenomenal response.
Yeah, it was a pretty big response.
Which, based on that three hundred number is pretty crazy.
How was it performed? Was it?
So that's the piece that I'd like to understand.
That one had a combination of mail, we got mail in my mailbox from, they basically distributed to the mailing list and then, I'm not sure. I'm not sure how the electronic one worked, because we got one in mail, so we just filled it out and sent it back electronically. I'm not sure if they just sort of emailed out a link to everybody on their email distribution list, which is quite extensive, like over ten thousand if my numbers are...
And then they shared the link at large?
And then they shared the link on them, yeah, yeah. So they made, they were trying to make it available to as many people as possible to get as many responses as possible, and certainly the responses were good. I just...
I think you can use this company for other applications, but if we're looking at it really for ARPA, I think, I don't think you're, what they're doing is really truly a random survey, because you need to have access to an internet, you need, you know, so right away that eliminates some people, right? So if you did a survey and you really wanted to reach everyone, you would need to do a multi-prom approach, which would include direct mail. So I think if we're, if we're looking at this as just something to help with ARPA, then I think I would propose a more all-encompassing as far as different media that you're using, not just the internet. And I think that you would, you know, I would like to see three thousand rather than four hundred people that, you know, use the website.
Okay, that was a question I was just gonna ask for purposes of trying to determine what the public interest is in how we should allocate the ARPA money. You know, what do you guys think is the best way to go about it? And I think we got an answer.
My concern, and I think we share this similar viewpoint, in that the people that we're responding would be people who are commenting and, you know, comfortable online, which is not everybody in our town. And I think this is a very important decision. These are important funds. We want to make sure we do the right thing, and I don't want to limit it to the people that are online and using social media.
Yeah, and even if you're looking at social media and you're following, you know, a major website in town, it doesn't mean that you're getting all, all of the viewers are Darien residents, so you're skewing your results there, too, so...
What's the, what's the amount that we're talking about?
Twenty-four thousand.
Twenty-four thousand.
No, 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 I'm sorry. The amount that we're trying to study to be given out?
Oh, six million.
Six million dollars, okay.
I think that I am personally interested in a receiving statistically valid sampling of our community through some kind of a survey and outreach method for purposes of spending ARPA money, since we have to be so accountable for the spending in the long run, that I, I'm not sure that without the inclusion of the statistically valid surveys in the twenty-four thousand, I'm not sure it's the highest and best use of our money. And if there are other survey providers that the steering committee could work with...
Absolutely.
I might recommend that we, that we, we don't approve this expenditure.
That was sort of one of my other directions, was that we have the, that committee just forming to set the priorities for the use of the ARPA funds, and I would kind of like to let them opine as to whether this is high on their list of things that they think the town should spend it on.
And the town that I spoke with, it did re-up their contract with this company, but they are not using them for ARPA decisions.
That's interesting. Okay. Well, I'm gonna recommend that we, we do not move forward with this purchase at this time. So, anybody feel strongly that we should...
No, I would second that.
I would agree.
I think you don't have to have a...
If it was a small amount of money for ARPA, but it's six million dollars, what do I get it right?
Okay.
You'll at least say I made every effort to find out what was the given from the town from a statistically viable sample.
Yeah, I think David's right. I mean, once the committee is formed, maybe we do a little more, you know, due diligence and...
Yeah, the committee may take into this and do a little more due diligence. I mean, for example, you know, if I were on the committee, I would want to see what one of these temperature check things looks like, you know, to understand, you know, how is it prepared? How is the wording of the questions done? Because in any type of survey environment, how you word the questions cannot mislead the answer you get. You know, exactly what it looks like, what the output looks like, so we can find, you know, figure it out. Those would be some of the things that I would ask for.
Okay, I think that's a unanimous no, Kate.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, moving on to transfers. This one, I think you, did you get the modified version today?
I didn't know it.
Okay, so discuss and take action on a request to transfer $12,647 to the Reserve Fund for Capital Projects from Board of Finance Contingency. Questions? Was the description... Who, do you have questions for Kate? If no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved?
So moved.
Kit moves, David seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Okay, we have a transfer request for $36,768 from Board of Finance Contingency to hydrant charges.
But this is gonna be in the fiscal twenty-one?
This is, yes, I'm sorry, these are fiscal twenty-one.
Right, so no, we're just gonna have thirteen payments in twenty-one?
Yes.
That's okay, okay.
Any further questions? Entertain a motion to approve the transfer? David moves?
Second.
Kit seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Discuss and take action on a transfer of $23,942 for unemployment from medical insurance to unemployment compensation. Self-explanatory, I'll entertain a motion to approve. So moved. Monica moves, may I have a second? Sarah seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. We have a series of appointments this evening. We are here to appoint three members to the IT Steering and Governance Advisory Committee for a term ending on 12/31/2021. We have three great applicants, Sean Pavillo, David Young, and Holly Schultz. I'll entertain a motion to approve their appointments.
So moved.
Kit moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Monica seconds. Any further discussion about this? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
My own comment would be we're incredibly lucky to have that kind of talent for the project in town.
Yeah, absolutely.
Don't lose them.
I'm imagining most towns would not have that type of talent.
Kate, you're gonna be very lucky with these people.
They bench there.
We, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Karen Cummins to the Commission on Aging for a term expiring on March 31st, 2024. Sarah moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Monica seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. We are holding over the appointment to the Human Service Commission. Our candidate was not able to interview tonight, so hopefully we'll have her next time. And we're here to appoint two members to the Parks and Rec Commission for terms ending on March 31st, 2024. The Board of Selectmen would like to approve Cara Bonsack and Janet Kling. I'll entertain a motion to approve Cara and Janet's appointment.
So moved.
Kit moves, second. Monica seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I just want to say for the record, we had, that was a tough spot. We had three great candidates for two spots, and it's always a very hard choice for us, and we know that there's going to be an opportunity to keep the third candidate engaged, so we look forward to that. So here tonight also to approve a selectman representative to the ARPA Grant Funds Advisory and Steering Committee. I'm not sure that's the right name that we gave it, but...
Whatever that committee is.
That's what I gave.
Close enough.
Whatever that committee is.
And so I would like to nominate Monica McNally to serve as the second Board of Selectmen rep, along with the first selectman, and then that gets shuffled come November, so that makeup will change a little bit. So I'll entertain a motion to approve Monica for the ARPA Committee. David moves, may I have a second?
Second.
Kit seconds.
You're gonna be pretty busy with the Technology Committee and the ARPA Committee.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Are you abstaining or voting for yourself?
No.
You can vote for yourself. It's accessible.
Are you voting no, or?
No.
I think you've changed your mind.
And then I'd like to recommend the appointment of Sarah Newman to serve on the Hindley Homes and Royal School Building Committee. So I'll entertain a motion to...
So moved.
Second.
Misery knows where company is.
Monica seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you for voting for yourself. Sarah, you'll be great on that. Terrific, thank you for your volunteerism. All right, we have minutes of the regular meeting of August 16th. Sarah.
Kate, the only thing I saw, if you go onto page four, under item number four, the end of the paragraph is slightly odd.
Oh, it is odd, yes.
You might want to revise that.
Yeah, how about we just delete it, unless you remember what your thought was?
I'd have to go back to the tape.
Well, I can go back with the tape, but I don't know if you wanted...
No, I, I agree with, I don't know, I think, I don't know that there's anything that stood out in particular from the conversation, and we could steer people to the lovely...
I'll just take it out.
Yes, video, if they had any questions.
Yeah, we'll delete that.
It just seems...
Okay. Any other edits, additions? Okay, hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to approve as amended the August 16th regular meeting minutes. Sarah moves, David seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And we have special meeting minutes of August 16th. Entertain a motion to approve, Sarah moves, may I have a second?
Aye.
Monica seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, agenda review.
Do we have a date for when we, I think you talked about the end of September meeting, we were gonna maybe have our sewer commission and...
Yes, so to talk about flooding?
Flooding, yes.
Yeah, so we've been having a problem getting a date when the planning director, land director, chairman of the board, chairman of the sewer commission and the public works director for all be present.
Okay.
So so far, now we're looking into October. We might need to consider having a special meeting just for that purpose, if you all would be able to...
I'd be a member to that, I think it's a...
I'd be a member to it, yeah.
I would, too.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's really important to have all three of them, though.
Yeah, I mean, because they hit all aspects of what happens.
They hit all aspects, and I think it's an important topic for the town.
Hundred percent. Thank you. Anything else for agenda review?
We are gonna be bringing back this snow removal ordinance. We left it with, you wanted to know what other towns do.
We do need to discuss that.
Yes, so the question I have for you is, you know, I have a basic for our neighboring towns, what they do in terms of, do they have a fine? Will the town move the snow if people don't do it? And do they charge people back? Is there anything else you want to know about what other towns do in terms of this?
Not necessarily from what other towns do. I want to have an understanding of the capabilities. We were to put something like, we do it and then we charge, do we have the ability in the town, do we have the manpower to be able to, to go out and to do that? Is that something that we can, we can take on?
You need to enforce it?
Well, we talked about shuffling it to, and then charging back, you know, for those folks that don't maybe do it, and I don't know if we have the ability to take that on. We have a phenomenal crew, and they work very hard, and I just didn't know if we then had additional people then could go separately to these maybe regular properties that don't and to do this. So I just didn't know if that was something that we could physically take on.
Do we have a way to differentiate between the properties and, what I'm thinking of particularly is clearing the school walking routes, right?
Priorities.
And then clearing, well, I'm assuming that we have a hundred percent compliance from all the commercial businesses in town, but primarily making sure the school walking routes are safe for the kids.
So that, that should always be a priority, you know, walking student safety. Routes to school change, depending on where the kids live. And then you have to ask the question about, do you use, what I think is a reasonable tool, do you use the bus policy that they have that says a kid that lives two miles from Darien High School doesn't get a bus?
Right.
Right? It's a, you know, it's a pretty...
Yeah, there are kids that walk for almost two miles.
Right, so that's a, you could define that differently. You could say, you know, we, we're going to have a policy that within X, you know, circumference around a school, you know, we're going to look at the main walking routes.
Right.
And to your question, Sarah, whether we have internal resources or whether we'd have to contract for, you know, might be the question.
That's the question, yeah, what's the cost?
And then does that create an incentive for people to not, are they just gonna say, you know?
Fine, I'll just pay it.
So lots to discuss.
Yes.
On that front. I'd like to hear the experiences of other towns.
In terms of how difficult it is to enforce?
Yes, you know, I guess what are the best practices for enforcement? Who, who has a plan that, that works?
Okay.
If any?
If any.
Yeah.
I'll see if I can help you.
Okay. All right, if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you, Sarah, may I have a second?
Second.
Monica seconds. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great, thanks, everybody. Kate and Jamie.